This is our five o'clock reg- regular meeting of June thirteenth. We done had said the pledge allegiance, we'll let all that be okay. We'll go into the uh. We need to approve the agenda.
Come over here, second.
Second, got motion in a second. Okay, let's vote on it. Mr. Burst?
Aye.
Mr. Pope, uh, Mr. Lucas?
Aye.
Mr. Byrne?
Aye.
Okay. Approve the agenda, okay? The guest speaker for items on the agenda. Miss Myer.
Thank you very much. As y'all know, I've been doing this a long time and I hope that I'm getting emotional. Um, I started with the General Herald in nineteen eighty-six and since that time I've covered a lot of administrations and a lot of different commissions and I have loved my job. I've enjoyed every minute of it. It's been an adventure that I will relish for the rest of my life. But there are those two things that have happened in my life that I never thought would happen in two thousand. My daddy died and I just thought he was gonna live forever. And I thought I was gonna stay young forever, but age has crept up on me. And I'm gonna start cutting back. On June the thirtieth, I will be working out of the Mahana office only twenty hours a week. And I'll still cover y'all, but I'll be doing it by way of the internet. So unless y'all have another meeting before June thirtieth, today will be my last meeting in your presence. And I wanted to thank you all for everything you've done for me. I have loved working with y'all and all of the previous commissions and I just love Scott more to death. I think he's the most super county chairman ever, I mean county manager ever. And that's all. I just wanted to let y'all know, wanted to tell you all at one time because so I wouldn't have to go over so many times. I look forward to being awful little, but I also dread it because I'm an active person. But over the last year, I've had some pretty rough illnesses and they've taken a toll on me, so I'm gonna be cutting back some and I guess they'll probably appoint somebody else to cover y'all in the near future.
Okay.
But I appreciate that.
All right.
I'd like to say, Myer, uh, Myer.
Yes, sir.
I'd like to say this, this is my third or fourth term and you were here when I was here thirty years ago with the General Herald. Not all county commissions have such a good working relationship with newspapers. It's always been adversarial with a lot of, a lot. But I will say that you have been one of the fairest reporters for this county commission that you could possibly be. And I appreciate that and I will miss you.
Thank you.
You know, that'll make crying.
I'll miss you too.
Also, I'd just like to piggyback on what Commissioner Pope has said that I've been knowing Myer a long time, even before I got into government. I knew her back when Ms. Vivian Evans had the supplemental mission. I think that's when I first met Myer and we became friends and continued that friendship over the years, uh, her father, Reverend PNT, uh, Pete Thrift, uh, her children and been with her through a lot of different things when her son got in, I think, bad wreck or something like that and so, uh, she's always been fair. As Commissioner Pope says, she's always been fair and she's always been approachable. And, uh, I'm gonna miss you being here, but I want you to know I wish you the best in whatever you're doing and I know you're gonna do a good job in it. We went through the Citizen Police Academy together and, uh, so she's just been a real dear friend over the years and, uh, I just appreciate her and appreciate the type of person she is.
Myer, I'm gonna miss you because me and you go back a long ways also. Whenever I was at the sheriff's office,
Yeah.
we'd have round stuff and stuff on weekends and Myer, she'd be out there in the car with me riding with me, taking pictures. She'd done a really good article once whenever I would do the school stuff at Wakeona. She'd got a picture of me out there in the middle of the highway, one of them praises like this right here. But, uh, we're gonna miss you. You've always been a good friend.
I was thinking about a while ago when they were talking about the mobile home decals.
Oh, yeah.
We went out with, uh, me and Steve to check on some people that weren't paying the taxes on their mobile homes. But I've been through a lot in this job and I, it's been some, a lot of things that I never would have gotten to do. One thing that I always sticks after me, I became good friends with Governor Zell Miller. And I went to Atlanta one time and he called me into his office, pulled out his chair and I sat in the governor's chair in Atlanta, in the Capitol and I dare say probably very few people ever got to do that. But I, I've had some really good times and I've enjoyed working with the police. I remember Timmy when he was on the police force and, uh, Jim Blackburn and all those great, wonderful people. I've just had so many memories over the years and it'll sustain me for the rest of my life.
Well, I can tell you, Miss Myer, I'm definitely gonna miss you too. You know, I love you. My family loves you. I mean, my family's known you since before I was here, so. And, and I've kept every article you've ever wrote on me when I was on the traffic unit and before that and after that. I mean, it's meant the world to me, the kind words you would always put in the paper. But like I said, I'm just piggybacking off everything every commissioner up here said. You're fair and firm at the same time and that's very rare to find these days.
Thank you.
Thank you, Miss Myer. I, I can, uh, remember her brother, Paul. If y'all didn't ever know him, you, you missed it all. He was a cardigan.
Uh, thank you, Myer, for the kind words. I really appreciate that. And I'd like to say too, I would go back way back into the early nineties when I was with Ware County back then and you know, I, I was so happy and excited when I started back with Ware County as the, as the county manager and I I saw Myer in the room and I'm like, I'm home, you know? And so you're, you were always a large part of this government and we considered you a part of it, still do and always will. So, yeah.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Anybody else? All right, we'll move on. Consent items. Approval of meeting minutes for May of twenty twenty-two, the work session, public hearing, the reg- regular meeting. Are you a motion to approve the minute?
I'm making motion to approve the minutes for the May twenty-twenty-two work session, May the ninth, public hearing, May the ninth, regular meeting of May the ninth.
Okay, you got a second?
I'll second that.
Okay.
Bless you.
Mr. Burst?
Aye.
Mr. Pope, uh, Mr. Lucas?
Aye.
Mr. Byrne?
Aye.
Okay. Uh, now, these are agenda items for this week. To bid award for the twenty twenty-one CDBG street paving, flooding and drainage improvement. That's on that Emerson Park project. I have a motion that we accept it.
I'll make a motion that we accept the bid award on the twenty twenty-one CBD street project flooding and drainage improvements for the Emerson Park area.
I'll second it.
Okay. That's for Littlefield Construction Company. Okay. We got a motion and a second. Is any discussion on it?
Do we need to, um, state the amount of that, uh, contract?
Yes.
I believe it's, uh, the total amount is one million, seven hundred and sixty-six thousand, two hundred and eighty-six dollars, fifty-five cents.
Is there a time limit on that thing? What's the time on it? Brandon, is there?
I'm not sure, uh, Chairman, I have looked that up, need that, need that back for you, but I'm, there is, I'm sure, a time limit on.
There's a time limit and.
I do know with CDBGs that you have a two-year period to get the complete project done. You can't ask for extensions, but I don't foresee this going that far, so.
Okay. Uh, I'm sure there's a penalty for not finishing too, in time. Okay. Any more on it? When will this be awarded, Scott? Do you know?
Well, tonight it will be awarded and then a notice proceed I think will shortly follow once everything is cleared. And then we just, we have to stay in contact with the regional commission on that since it's a CDBG.
Okay. All right, anything else?
Should go pretty quick if they.
Who got the bid on it?
It's, uh, Littlefield. Littlefield.
Littlefield.
Yes, sir.
Yep.
And I believe I did see in that, well, they have a ten percent contingency.
Yes, sir.
Be, okay, that's included in that contract, right?
Right, yes, sir.
Bidder Littlefield Construction Company. Bid of one million, seven hundred and sixty-six thousand. Okay. Any more on it? All right, we got a motion and a second. Let's, uh, vote on it. Mr. Burst?
Aye.
Mr. Pope, uh, Mr. Lucas?
Aye.
Mr. Byrne?
Aye.
Chair vote aye. Okay, now we'll bid award for the swamp road paving project. Paving improvement, that's for some patches on that road. And we have a bid from Alan Owens. I have a bid from Alan Owens for forty-six thousand, forty-three dollars, fifty cent. They had a low bid. It was three bids. Thrift Brothers was sixty-one, seven thirty-five, seven thirty-six, fifty. East Coast was seventy-eight, five twenty-six, thirty-seven. Alan Owens was apparently low bidder. I hear a motion to do that.
Can I ask a question on this?
Yeah.
I'm looking at the bid tabulation on East Coast for the traffic control and mobilization. Alan Owens got total cost of twenty-five hundred dollars. East Coast, nineteen thousand, seven hundred. And Thrift Brothers is five thousand. Do you think East Coast made a mistake on that? Poor Brandon.
Whoever did the tabulation? Did you do a tabulation on it? Did you engineer?
That add up. I mean, I'm not responsible for what he put in there for that bid.
Oh, yeah. You don't know if that was, did you?
No.
You see what I'm talking about there?
If you add those numbers up in the bid tabulation and all the numbers added up, I can't, I'm not responsible for what.
Oh, yeah.
But I just wonder, since it's out of whack like that.
I can ask that question.
Are you gonna table it until we find out?
Can we table this, Scott, until we ask him about it?
I would think so, yes, sir.
Pretty big spread.
It is, ain't it?
I thought you told fourteen thousand dollars.
That still wouldn't put them. I don't know.
Put it, put them out in line.
It's still high for that, all that work right there too. No more than that. Just leveling the road though. It's kinda high price, ain't it? All right, yeah.
It can be tabled. We can add it, put it on the, uh, the next agenda.
You wanna do that?
Yes, sir.
Still.
It'd be all, I mean, it's.
What?
I mean, if it was three or four thousand, I wouldn't say nothing about it. But you're looking at fourteen thousand dollars where one person had twenty-five hundred, the other one had five, theirs is nineteen thousand, seven hundred.
It makes this to the, I guess to the attorney. If we table this to get clarification, then does that mean we have to go back to each one of them and say, are you sure that's what you want?
Well, my, yeah, my concern on the tabling is just, um, you know, East Coast right now is at seventy-eight thousand, so even if that nineteen thousand, seven hundred was a zero, they still wouldn't be the lowest bidder.
Right.
So I, I guess.
That's what I was just looking at.
Is, does it? But it's certainly the commission's desire. That just.
What was their total bid?
Seventy-eight.
Seventy-eight, five.
Yeah, if you, it's, it drops it down. If you zeroed that out, it'd only drop it down to fifty-eight thousand. It'd still, it'd be third, second, excuse me, because the other one's sixty-one, right? Yeah.
It'd be second?
Yeah, second.
Was there mobilization on each island?
Yeah, I mean, that's, that's even if you just zeroed out their mobilization and put it at zero, it would, it would change East Coast bid to fifty-eight thousand.
Okay.
Is Alan Owens?
Yeah.
Is he qualified?
Yes, certainly. Far as I know, they've, uh, done other paving work for the city of Wake Cross. I think they did something over on Morningside Drive.
Is anybody in here writing down Morningside Drive after that was done? That's some worse paving than the stuff.
Even one that done Allen Street also, they any?
I won't vote for them.
Is he the one that did Allen Street?
Yeah, down by the hospital?
I don't know. I don't know. Sure. I know they went through like three contractors to, to do that work.
Yeah, that one on Allen Street is like the rising.
You better have your seatbelt on going down.
I bet he did the paving.
I think he did do some of that work, uh.
I don't know.
He did.
The next bid is, uh, Thrift with sixty-one.
I've got, Steve, have you had people come? I asked Michael and he said they have no record whatsoever of anybody saying one word about this stuff. Have people been calling you about it? About these patches?
Yeah, yeah, people out Swamp Road.
Uh, there ain't nobody calling me about them.
Especially the one out there right before you get to Swamp Road Baptist Church. It's bad.
Is it coming back this way? Is it the westbound or the east?
Both sides of the road. Right before you get to Swamp Road Baptist Church is the worst one.
Is that on curb?
No, the one on the curb is the one that's got those.
Yeah. Yes. That's old and I mean, that, that.
We're gonna be out there working.
We'll get it fixed.
I don't know. I ain't spend that much money just on a patch.
I vote for people to reject all bids and go move somewhere else. Cause these kinda prices, we had change order that was less than the bid, so, anyway. But I know this is Steve gesturing and I don't get those calls.
Just reject the bids.
That is something Kenny McAdie speaks.
No, they ain't got that.
Jimbo, that's just.
He had to have a milling machine.
You know how to run a milling machine, Jimbo? I, I'll do, I'll run the paving machine if Jimbo runs the milling machine. I'll pull that.
Be like Morningside Drive, y'all do it.
I will say, I don't expect prices to come down. Probably say that. I have full confidence if we bid this out again.
It'll come back.
Prices will not go down.
And there's no way that we could go like the East Coast and tell them, hey, you know, if you can do it for that, we, you know, we, we had a moment there.
But why would they do a change order for that price? Just like they would hold it down too.
I begged them to come over here and look at this with me and, and got that price and then when we put it out in bids, that's kinda like slapping somebody in the face and saying, appreciate it, but we, we gonna bid this out anyway. And so I think that's why the price went up. And that, the, the price, the contract was eight months old when I got the quote for the proposal to do the work originally. So we were talking about old numbers to begin with. So when you bid something out, you give people an opportunity to reprice things. Things that went up, they have not went down. I don't see them going down anytime soon.
I guess you should.
I'm right there. I think we'll just reject these bids. I think it too.
I understand.
All right, next time when people calls me complaining, I'll say, y'all called the chairman. These ones rejected it.
When I say do that again, I don't think it'll be cheaper. I think it'll be.
Probably be more.
Probably be more.
Yep. And then we're opening the door to spend more money if we don't lock something. I mean, right now, we got one of the companies to have.
We done paid a fella to go out and fix them.
Sir.
We done paid one fella to go fix them. I bought these from them new tractors. Are you a motion?
I'll make the motion that we fix it. We just got to figure out who we.
Well, if, if we're not gonna go with one, then go with the next lowest. I mean, they're reputable.
How much is the difference in forty-six?
About thirteen thousand.
Thirteen thousand, oh.
Well, I'd make the motion if we go to Owens Construction. This Brandon, you bid, you make sure he does it right.
Yes, sir.
All right, I got a second. Got a motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second it. I'd like to say again, you know, Brandon kinda monitoring them and letting them know this is his test case here, man.
Okay. Got a motion and a second. Any discussion? All right, we'll bid it. Mr. Burst?
Aye.
Mr. Pope?
No.
Mr. Lucas?
No.
Mr. Byrne?
Aye.
Chair vote, no. Okay. Okay, alcohol license application, thirty-seven ninety-eight memorial drive. I have a motion to award those licenses.
The chairman, I move, excuse me, I move that we accept the, or approve the applicant Jamie and company for a alcohol license, uh, thirty-nine, thirty-seven ninety-eight memorial drive as presented by, um, planning and codes.
Okay. Is there any stipulation to be put on that for, I believe Mr. Burst said something about no alcohol in the skating rink or you, you wanna put anything on that?
Well, I, when it got to discussion, I was just gonna.
Okay, do we have a second? Oh, yeah. Okay, we have a second on that license.
I'll second it for discussion on that.
Okay. We have a motion and a second. Now we have any discussion?
Okay, I thought Mr. Schubert and then we, uh, based on what, uh, this applicant, they've met all the requirements, done everything that's supposed to. And, uh, the only stipulation we could put is maybe like have like a separation, I believe, if we so desired, you know, a wall or a petition or something like that, you know? But other than that, uh, they've met all the qualifications. Is that right, Mr. Schubert?
Is, is there any way, Chief Schubert, that we can make a stipulation of no alcohol exits that front door? I mean, they do have higher security there?
You do not. The law, I think, actually prohibits you carrying alcohol outside anyway.
Okay.
So if the on-duty security, um, sees them taking alcohol outside, they're making, they can silence them for that. And then if they do violate the alcohol ordinance, state versus state for local, um, then the commission has powers, police powers to revoke their license in full.
Okay.
And pause about the petition or something like that's, that's something you could talk with us?
I would talk with the applicant and, and we could probably look at like a half wall that has one inch of sway so you can kinda control who's coming up to the bar, who's not.
I think also something was mentioned about some signage.
Right.
You might have signs that say, uh, we're, we're gonna put signs up that says no alcohol outside. Uh, and also there should be some signs at the bar here that says no one, uh, no alcohol permitted anyone up in twenty-one.
But I'm sure they.
I'd put you on there anyway, bro.
If they get their license to say, if I'm over there bowling, I wanna drink a beer while I'm bowling, you can do it.
You can.
But then you got kids right next door, two, three kids over there and, you know, our votes gonna be no, so.
Same thing if I go to a restaurant, I want a beer, I get a beer.
Well, they drink a beer in the stakeout or whatever, so I, I ain't gonna have a problem with it. All right, we got it. Any more discussion on it? So, yeah, your motion is to grant them the license.
Right. Approve the application as presented.
Okay.
And for the record, this is the bowling alley.
Bowling alley.
Yes, for the bowling alley.
Oil drive. Yes.
Okay. We got a motion and a second. Any more discussion? All right, let's vote on it. Mr. Burst?
Aye.
Mr. Pope?
Aye.
Mr. Lucas?
Aye.
Mr. Byrne?
No.
Chair vote, aye. Okay. This on the, uh, D proposal ordinance amendment for the mobile home homestead decal exemption. So, do I hear a motion on that one?
I make a motion that we accept it the way our tax commissioner presented it. Uh, I like the idea myself. I make a motion with you.
Okay, propose the ordinance amendment. Okay, we got a second.
I'll second it.
Okay. Any discussion on it?
Could, um, Madam Attorney explain the difference of what we're doing?
Sure.
Please, just for the record.
Yes, sir. Absolutely. So Senate bill, I believe it was. Yes, sir, absolutely. So Senate Bill, I believe it was one ninety-three amended the state code that now allows local governing authorities to control the permitting for mobile homes. And so there's some different terminology for it. You heard your tax commissioner earlier refer to it as pre-bill mobile homes. Um, I refer to it as personal property mobile homes, but those are the mobile homes that are not attached to the real estate underneath it. There is a, uh, a way in Georgia law that you can take certain steps and file certain documents with the local clerk of court that then allows the mobile home to be merged to the real estate under it. You turn in that title, um, and then you can receive homestead exemption on the mobile home. So what this ordinance, um, amendment does is it makes the local ordinance in Ware County require permitting for the personal property mobile homes, the ones that would move, so that we're able to track those through the tax commissioner's office, the tax assessor's office. But those mobile homes that have been homesteaded that are attached to the real property will no longer be required to have the permit.
Sticker. They, they won't be required to have a sticker in the.
The sticker, that's correct.
Okay, they, do they still have to buy the permit though? Or they just don't have to have the sticker?
My understanding is they won't have to.
Don't even have to have the sticker?
I don't, the.
Is that right?
A homestead of mobile home, people who own that will not have to, would not have a sticker.
They won't, they won't even have to buy.
But they do, they're, they're billed through their, like when they.
The county is homestead, okay.
They're, they're billed through the normal tax bill, uh, cycle which is, it's coming up. So, what I call pre-bill and she's called personal property.
Yeah.
Uh, they're billed out, um, they're due May sixth first. And those bills go out February first.
Okay.
Just to clarify, for the people watching on Facebook, you still have to have a permit to move that mobile home, set it up on your property. So it, this is only exempting the sticker from the tax side of it.
Could you repeat that or come up here? I'm just hard to, I don't know if anybody heard that.
I just want to clarify, because they're referring to it as a permit. You still have to have a permit to move a mobile home and set it up on your property. Once it's set up, then you can do the step to exempt yourself from having to buy a sticker, so you'll do like just regular house taxes. So, um, I just don't want people in Facebook world to say, well, we can move mobile homes now without permits.
Gotcha.
Yeah. Okay. All right, we got a motion in a second. Any more on it? How, 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 we need to say that just like it, the uh, proposed ordinance amendment?
We can just take a, a motion to approve the resolution regarding mobile home decals.
Okay. That way you said it. Okay. We got a second too. All right, let's vote on it. Mr. Burst?
Aye.
Mr. Pope?
Aye.
Mr. Lucas?
Aye.
Mr. Burner?
Aye.
Chair votes, aye. Okay. Okay, airport ground lease agreement. That's what Mr. Kent said, I hear a motion to lease that.
I make a motion for airport ground lease agreement.
I'll second.
Okay. Any discussion on it? Okay, put a vote on it. Mr. Burst?
Aye.
Mr. Pope?
Aye.
Mr. Lucas?
Aye.
Mr. Burner?
Aye.
Chair votes, aye. All right. Now, this is a appointment. Waco Cross Ware County Planning Commission Post One and Nine. Okay, so we got.
Oh, thanks.
One.
That's the one we pulled.
We pulled that one off.
Oh, yeah, hold on. Okay, yeah, let me show you. Okay, now we got the, eh, excuse me, I got on the wrong one. Appointment for Southern Georgia Area Agency and A, on A G. Okay, and you said that lady was, uh, what was her name?
Just did that.
Mariah Schuman?
Mary Schuman.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's it. Ms. Schuman is the uh.
Stevens.
Schuman.
Schuman.
Okay, I hear a motion to.
Can we appoint Ms. um, I guess, Mariah, Mariah Schuman to the um, Southern Georgia Regional Commission Area A G, Agency on Aging Advisory Council. She's, she would be reappointed.
Okay, yeah. So you got a second on it to get it out?
Second.
Okay, any discussion on it? Okay, let's vote. Mr. Burst?
Aye.
Mr. Pope?
Aye.
Mr. Lucas?
Aye.
Mr. Burner?
Aye.
Chair votes, aye. Okay. We got a county manager report.
Um, just one thing that, that was discussed during the uh, work session is the uh, the item of the um, the Roscoe Mixon Road, um, does the commission want to move forward with that as far as scheduling um, public hearing and such, but I know that we'd have to get um, the application for that to, to do that process.
I got one question. What was the final outcome on the Roscoe Mixon Road? What would the salary is gonna do with it?
Well, that's it. That was kind of where we are right now.
That's what we just mentioned. That's what we want to know. What?
My understanding was that we're gonna table it till we can get some clarification on certain things, right?
Details on who's gonna do what and the cost.
Right.
I think, too, was also the sat, what discussed about the church, uh, uh, where they deed the right of way, go in and bring the road up to county standards. And then we'll take over the road. And then at that point, then we'll talk about, uh, closing that.
In other words, once they get the road surveyed out, deeded over to the county, fixed to county spec.
Right.
Then we'll assume the ownership of the road, county will.
Mm-hmm.
But I'm sure they'll be calling me whenever I get home.
Yeah.
I know.
So I, explaining to them is just like what we did up at Norman Gillis Road, I'll get the road like the county wants, and we'll take it over from there.
I mean, that has not been decided.
Oh, it hasn't?
Haven't, I mean, that's what we.
Know it.
So like with the detail, but that had been decided, we hadn't voted on that, have we?
No.
We haven't reported on it, no.
Huh. That's what we want to do, is discuss it, wh- which way we do want to go with it. Do we want to do it, or do we want to have them to do it?
That's what we need to discuss now, try to find out.
I don't think, I don't, I don't, I'm not a big believer in changing the precedent that we've already set.
Yeah.
I mean, if we change the precedent we set, then we're just opening the door for a windfall effect.
What y'all saying that we need to tell Tommy and them that they need to get the right of way, deed it to the county, and build a road to the spec. And then we'll take it, and then we'll close the other one.
And, and we'll maintain it after that.
We'll maintain it.
Is that what you, we got to tell them?
Like you did on that Gillis, whatever that.
Norman Gillis.
Norman Gillis.
And I do have, and I can pull the documents from Norman Gillis, but we did have a basic, very brief, one to two-page agreement, um, with them that outlined exactly what they would do, what we would do, and I think we could easily recreate that for this situation. Um, and then also along with just, you know, it said, we agree, we'll get the survey, we agree, we'll bring the road up with specifications of the county engineer, these certain things, and then the county, it just lays out uh, in writing what each side agrees to. So I'll, if it, if it is the commission's desire, I'll go back and pull that and we'll see if we can um, work up something that may work for this situation.
That'll work.
Jack cleared up Jerry what he's talking about.
Yes, sir.
Let them do it and then present it to us. Okay. I guess that's where you have to.
I learned a long time ago, if it's not in writing, it don't exist.
Amen.
So, get it all in writing.
All right, good. Anything else?
No, sir, that's it.
On the banner? Okay.
Uh, Mr. Chairman.
Commission.
If I may, and it's on the, why about, you know, we discussed about the um, Pascal Road out there.
Mm-hmm.
About whether that was a private road or whether it was county road, and I think we're supposed to check on that to find out.
The, from some of the research that I did, I'll, all I could see, uh, especially where the uh, Fuller's property is, it was just strictly an easement. Um, there wasn't, wasn't dedicated, deeded right of way. Um, so, and it's, that's kind of what we found with other roads is, I don't believe we legally own it. Um, you know, it is just used as a script of easement, basically.
But if we got a script of easement on it, we can mow the shoulders off it, can't we? Kind of keep limbs from growing over the middle of the road.
Well, as long as you don't go past the right of way of what that is, and it's thirty foot from what I saw on the ones that, uh, I think Mr. Schubert or um, Dustin sent to me.
But that's just on the part that goes through the Fuller's, ain't it?
Yeah.
Now, the other part.
That's between, that's between the cattle gaps, yes, sir.
Yeah.
Yeah, we ain't got no business in there.
Now, the other one where he's talking about wanting to mow and done. Uh, Mr. Burst, that was, whose, whose property was that? Is that what?
Well, it's on that Pascal Road, but uh, I don't know what's the gentleman, Mr.
I think, I think the uh, the corner or the curve that he's talking about is one that's up there by his, his property.
Right.
It's kind of like the one right down from his driveway.
Yeah, it's, it's like a blind, basically like a blind curve, and
Yeah.
Basically, all they want to do is just see if you can just cut, so you can kind of have a little.
Well, I, I think in that situation, if that's the curve and that's the only one, um, we could get a surveyor out there to survey that, stake it. I don't, I'm not sure if um, Public Works or Engineering's had that corner surveyed, but I can find out, see where the pins are. I think they might have found the pins, I'm not sure, but I'll check on that.
Seems like they said something about that problem.
There's two curves.
That's got no blind spots out there.
It's very, it's very tight up there, but it's very tight.
Very narrow road.
There's a right of way, there, it would only be thirty feet.
Yeah.
If there's a right of way on that road. From my experience on other roads.
So that thirty feet would be like.
I guess it would be the script of easement.
Yeah.
So we said, the thirty foot right of way, that would be like from center of the road to the shoulder up.
That's the whole width of what you have, the whole width, both sides.
Eighteen feet, each side road.
Yeah, if you took the center of the road, you'd have fifteen one way and fifteen the other.
But now that, that's kind of misleading, and Miss Jennifer can, can uh, correct me, but I think the script of easement says you have the right to maintain what you've been maintaining and not go outside those bounds. So even if it shows up thirty foot right of way, but you want to be maintaining twenty-four feet, then that's all you get to keep, keep maintaining.
If it's a matter of safety, can, can, cannot they give an easement to encroach off the right of way to get those limbs cut from a safety standpoint? I mean, this, this has gone on now for two or three years.
Yeah.
Can we get it cut one way or another with an easement or whatever? Since we don't own it, it's prescribed by the.
I, if you can get an easement, the, as I think Jennifer mentioned, one of the meetings previous to that, you'd have to obtain the additional right of way one way or the other. Either they deed it, we purchase it, or you condemn it. Is that correct?
Well, I think what he's asking, and you know, we, we need to study exactly, are we talking ten feet off the right of way, or are we talking, you know, fifty feet, eighty feet, right?
Back patch, just.
Right.
If you go over two feet to get that limb from a safety standpoint, just some common sense cut.
I agree.
Well, and I'm, I'm glad, you know, he mentioned that because that's, the last time we talked about it, I'd say, well, okay, we don't have the right of way. Can we do it from a safety standpoint, you know, if it's a county road, you know?
Is, is that power line down? The power line has an additional ten foot. They have an additional ten foot on top of the thirty.
I can't remember.
They sure do.
Yeah.
If the power pole is up there, you can go another ten foot.
Right.
Maybe we spend enough wheels around here, it looks like we could spend some out there and get, get this safety thing here.
Well, I'll, I'll get, we'll see about getting that survey and see, make sure where those pins are, so that way we can determine what more do we need to, to do. And I don't know from a legalistic standpoint if we can do what you were mentioning, you know, if it's a safety issue, can we do that?
Can we declare emergency? We gotta cut that tree down, cause it's gonna fall on somebody. There's a way to do it.
Oh, yeah.
Do it for.
Yeah. But I will, I'll get that checked on this thing.
Yeah, because like I said, it's been rocking on, I know since I've been up here.
Yeah, I checked ownership of it, and that's just an easement, but then we'd have to go into the next phase of that whole thing.
Okay. Anything else? Nothing else? Are you a motion to adjourn?
Some moves.
Second.
Second.
Got a motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Meeting adjourned.